Hurry up, Steve.
Judy might not be here. No. Um, wait a minute. Yeah, one, two, three, four, five. Yeah, one, two, yeah. Wait a minute. No, I need four. One, two, that's twenty-four.
Oh, yeah, four. Let's get going. Start the meeting from the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and all.
Mr. Dinkler, would you do the roll call, please?
Mayor Steen.
Present.
Councilmember Largie Anderson.
Present.
Councilmember Enright. King.
Present.
Austin.
Present.
Jordal.
Present.
Hagan. Carolyn.
Present.
We have a quorum, Your Honor.
Thank you. Item number one is a motion for approval of the minutes of February 1st, 2016. We need a motion.
So moved.
Is there a second? Is there a second?
Second.
Oh, in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Under, we don't have any awards or recognition. Number four is the consent agenda. We need a motion for that.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Oh, in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Under public hearing, number five is a public hearing on street improvements on Project 1A-16, Main Street South, First Avenue to Third Avenue Southwest, and Third Avenue Southwest, Main Street to Fourth Street Southwest. Stephen.
Thank you, Mayor. The next few items are on the agenda are all part of our street reconstruction program for this summer, 2016. And through the city clerk's office and, and through getting information, we have sent out about 250 notices of assessments for street projects related to this, these different projects that we're going to present here tonight. So just to let you know kind of how many people we inform of these sorts of things and how many people throughout the community they impact. Are, the first one, as you described there, was South Main Street and Third Avenue Southwest. This is a state aid project. And Main Street, as you indicated there, was from First Avenue to Third Avenue Southwest. And then we'd be going from Third Avenue from Main Street to Fourth Street Southwest. And here is a map of that area. Uh, Main Street is concrete and Third Avenue is asphalt. Uh, here are some photos of those two project areas showing some deteriorated concrete pavement. Um, Main Street, let me, let me see if I have it here on the next slide. I'm sorry. Uh, Main Street was last constructed, I believe, in the seventies. And Third Avenue was likely constructed back in the fifties. Uh, we don't keep good, uh, records of our asphalt streets because a lot of those were just done by our city crews at that time. Uh, but again, those are some photos of things we're looking to correct in those areas. With, one other thing to mention, um, as, as we talked about the notices that were sent out, along with that, we did also have informational meetings that we hold with residents. We, we do these same presentations that you're going to see tonight. We held those last, a week ago yesterday, last Monday, I believe it was the eighth, at the library. We had good turnout for that, had some questions, took some, uh, public input at those meetings. And, and then at that time, uh, we told all the folks that attended, we'd be doing these same presentations tonight and tonight is those actual hearings. So now getting on to this project, um, we're looking at, for Third Avenue Southwest, we'd be removing the asphalt pavement and the curb, uh, installing new asphalt pavement with new curb and gutter, widening out the roadway from thirty feet to thirty-four feet in width. Our standard throughout the city is, is typically thirty-six, uh, but in this area, we wanted to look at, uh, saving trees as much as possible, so we did narrow that slightly to thirty-four feet in width. And previously, council has already, um, passed a resolution to restrict parking on one side of this roadway, so parking will be limited to one side with this design of thirty-four feet. And that parking lane there is, is going to be on the north side. Uh, we'll fix any deficient sidewalk, improve all the handicap ramps, make them all ADA handicap accessible. And then we will, uh, replace the end drives and fix up the boulevards. Underground, we take this opportunity to upgrade all the underground infrastructure. Uh, down there at the bottom, Austin Utilities plans to replace all of the water main. They will also review, uh, the individual homeowners' water services at that time and replace them as necessary if they happen to be a lead or galvanized service. Uh, Austin Utilities also has plans to, uh, move power poles as necessary with the street widening if there's any pole realignments that are needed. As for our underground infrastructure, we plan to construct new storm sewer to improve the drainage. We'll put down, uh, underground tile to improve the subsurface drainage. We've, uh, inspected the sanitary sewer and we're looking at lining this entire stretch of sanitary sewer on Third Avenue. And then we will also look at manholes as needed. Very similarly on Main Street, except for this project is a concrete roadway. Uh, the roadway width varies. We're going to match the existing roadway width. Uh, from first to second, it's forty-four feet, uh, and then from second to third, it is thirty-six feet. So we will maintain those existing widths with new concrete pavement. Again, with this project, you have already passed a resolution to restrict parking. Um, so there will be one parking lane allowed and it will be on the east. Parking will be allowed on the east side of the road from second to Third Avenue. Uh, again, we'll replace the sidewalk, put in handicap ramps and those end drives and restore the boulevards. Uh, very similarly, underground utility construction, again, uh, new storm sewers, new catch basins, underground, uh, tile, sanitary sewers. Again, we will look at lining these sanitary sewers, um, to remove inflow and infiltration. And Austin Utilities, very similarly, has water main replacement, uh, some spot repairs to the gas main, and then, um, underground electrical work. Uh, project schedule with, uh, Fourth of July. Um, we are looking at not starting Main Street until after the Fourth of July. We want to make sure that it's open for the parade. But we will likely start Third Avenue prior to that, uh, looking at starting Third Avenue in early June, uh, getting the water main under construction. And then after the Fourth of July, we would remove the pavement on Main Street and water main work would roll right onto Main Street. That's our plan for phasing of this project. With a project like this, uh, when we're able to come in and, and reconstruct the roadway, put in a new surf, surface, we're able to improve the ride and safety, we improve the drainage, um, more visibly, visually appealing streets, we increase the lifespan of the roadway, uh, decrease maintenance costs, that's really one of the biggest things. And then also, um, installing those handicap ramps, improving pedestrian access, and repairing any deficient sidewalk that are in these areas. We have set assessment rates, as council knows, we passed these earlier this, uh, winter, with a residential parcel, forty-three dollars per foot. Uh, we have some commercial par, parcels on Main Street that will be assessed, sixty-one dollars and seventy-five cents per foot. Uh, we also have sidewalk rates of approximately a hundred and ten to a hundred and fifteen dollars for a sidewalk panel. And if you have a, a six-inch panel, those are the ones through your driveway, they're a little bit thicker, those are usually a hundred and fifty to, to a hundred and fifty-five dollars per panel. And there at the bottom is an interest rate of four point seven five percent if this is, if the homeowners choose to have this assessment put on their taxes. So that brings us to payment options for these assessments. Uh, there are four payment options. Homeowners will receive a bill in late August or early September. At that time, they could choose option number one, which would be to pay the entire amount in full by October 31st without interest. Option number two is they could pay at least fifty percent of the assessment. Uh, the remainder would go on their taxes, spread out over fifteen years at that four point five percent interest rate. Option number three is when they receive that, uh, bill in the fall, they could choose to do nothing and the entire amount would be put on their taxes, again, spread out over fifteen years with interest. Uh, the first time that they would see that on their taxes is in 2017. And then finally, option number four is if they meet certain age and income guidelines, they could choose to have it deferred on their taxes until such time that they, uh, pay off the house or, or choose to pay it off sometime in the future. Uh, if it, again, if it does, if they choose that deferral option, if they put it on their taxes, it does have that four point five percent interest rate. So that is all I have for this project.
Counsel, anything?
Yeah, Stephen, do you know if, uh, Utilities is doing, you talked about Utilities improvements, will they be doing underground, uh, Utilities? Because you mentioned poles as well.
Yeah, uh, they do not have plans to put the pole, to put the electrical underground at this time, so no. The only thing they would be doing, if they have to move the poles, they'd likely just move them back.
Thank you.
Anything else, uh, counsel? Okay, now this is a public hearing, so if anybody is here tonight that wishes to address the counsel on this issue, on this issue right now, we'll be getting to the other ones later. But if anybody wishes to speak on this issue right now, just raise, raise your hand or come on up here, uh, give us your name, your address, and your concerns. Okay, if not, we'll move on. We need a resolution ordering improvement, approving plans and specifications and ordering advertisement for bids. Counsel?
So, so moved.
Second. Mr. Dinkler.
Councilmember King.
Aye.
Austin.
Aye.
Jordal.
Aye.
Carolyn.
Aye.
Councilmember Largie Anderson.
Aye.
Resolution passes five zero, Your Honor.
Thank you. Next is number six. We're still on public hearing. Public hearing on street improvements on Project 2-A-16, Third Street Northwest, Fourth Avenue to Eighth Place Northwest, Sixth Place Northwest, First Drive to Fourth Street Northwest, and Seventh Place Northwest, First Drive to Fourth Street Northwest. Stephen.
Yes, on your screens is a map of the area that the mayor just described. Um, we call this area the Places. It's up by the YMCA, up in that area. And, uh, the area is highlighted in green, again, as the mayor described. Some existing conditions of the roadway surfaces in this area. Uh, roadway pavement has deteriorated to such a point where, uh, maintenance is no longer possible. It's, it's really time to look at full replacement in this area. Many of the, the curbs are missing or, or gouged into, and, uh, there isn't a whole lot of curb left in, in much of this area for curb height. So with this project, um, with the surface improvements, we'll remove the existing asphalt pavement and that vertical curb. Uh, Third Street, we'll look to widen that from thirty feet to thirty-two feet. And on the two places, Sixth Place and Seventh Place, we'll look to widen those from thirty feet to thirty-six. Again, uh, that, that thirty-six foot is our standard. We're able to do that with minimal impact to trees on the two places. But, uh, there are very large established trees on Third Street, so we're looking at a thirty-two foot width there. Um, underground, well, again, uh, sidewalk upgrades, entrance walks, grass boulevards, ADA compatible intersections, everything that we discussed on the previous slide as well, something that we look at uniformly across the city with those, uh, handicap accessible ramps. Underground utility infrastructure, uh, again, very old infrastructure in this location. Again, much of this is, this is a very, uh, original neighborhood to Austin, so, uh, we'll be replacing a lot of the storm sewer mains, catch basins and laterals to improve drainage. Uh, we've looked at the sanitary sewer. We will be lining sections of sewer in this area, not all of it, but just sections based on infiltration and what we're seeing on those televising reports. Uh, Austin Utilities, again, will replace the water main. Um, everything kind of north of Fifth Place for water main will be replaced, along with, uh, service extensions as needed. And then, um, Austin Utilities, again, has some power poles that will likely be relocated as part of the project. With this project, we're looking at getting started in early May, depending on when conditions are favorable to start construction. This'll be one of the first projects that we start. Uh, construction will also be staggered a little bit to try to minimize the impact to the neighborhood. Uh, we try not to, uh, this is a little bit larger area. Um, we try to provide at least one block distance for people to park. It's, that's kind of our goal when we do a street reconstruction project. This one's a little bit different because there isn't parking allowed on Fourth Street, so some of those folks that are over near Fourth Street may have to walk a little bit farther than a block, but we do try to minimize that. And the phasing of this, again, we'll get Austin Utilities started on some water main in one area. As they get ready to move to the next area, they'll get started in the second, kind of the second area while we start to rebuild the roadways in that first area. So there will, will be a lot of construction going on all at one time. Again, we have those same project benefits. I won't list them all unless anybody has any questions. And then here, again, we have those same assessment rates, same sidewalk assessments, and same interest rate. Again, you'll see, we apply that, um, those set assess, assessment rates uniformly across the community with all of our projects. And again, we have those same assessment options, and I can repeat those if anybody has any questions. Uh, that is all I have.
Counsel, anything? Questions, comments? Okay, once again, this is a public hearing, so is there anybody here in the, that wishes to address the counsel on this project? Okay, if not...
Yes.
Okay, so why don't you come on up here and give us your name and your address?
Are you Mitch?
No, I am Stephen.
You're Stephen, talk.
Yes.
Right here, sir. I'm Mike Caporrell, and I live at 308 Sixth Place Northwest. Uh, just moved into the neighborhood, uh, within the last, last year. Uh, just a lovely, uh, the place is just a lovely neighborhood. I have, uh, three concerns. Uh, when I, when I talked to, uh, the engineer Mitch, it's Mitch, right, yeah? Uh, he assured me that the trees would, would be saved. We have trees that were built, that were living before our house was built in nineteen-hundred. So we have a hundred and twenty, a hundred, thirty-year-old trees, and, uh, they seem to be far enough away from the, from the curbs and the like, but it's something that adds to the, the neighborhood, and I just really implore that, that, that be watched. The, the second thing I have is that Sixth Place being widened, uh, there's a lot of children that, that walk up and down that street from, from the buses and the like. There's kids walking up and down it, uh, you know, most of the day when, when school is out. And I'm concerned that going to thirty-six feet is going to have traffic going faster down that street. And I just wonder, why does the street have to be widened, um, uh, just because of the potential safety issue of people coming off of Fourth, Fourth and, and then cutting down Sixth Place to get downtown? I think it's going to add a safety hazard to the, to, to, to the neighborhood. And, um, I think that's something that should be considered. It could reduce the cost if we didn't have that street as wide, um, the, the Places. And it would add safety to the neighborhood. And that's, you know, those are my, those are my concerns. Otherwise, I think the project is very well laid out and, and the like, and, and I appreciate it, Mitch spending his time talking to me about it.
Okay, and Mitch is right here, too.
Oh, you're Mitch? Hi, I'm Caporrell.
Stephen, would you like to address his concerns?
Yeah, the only thing, uh, Mitch has already talked to him about the trees, uh, but the second item regarding the street width, that, that's something that's been in place for many years, that was really developed based on, um, snow plowing operations and, and vehicles parking on both sides. When, uh, we have some streets that are in that thirty-foot width, if you get vehicles parking on both sides, start to get a little bit of snow buildup, we have a, a difficulty with getting our snowplows through those streets. So that's why that standard or that goal of thirty-six has been developed.
Okay. Anybody else? Did that answer your question, sir?
Uh, just, just one follow-up. Is it possible to just have parking on one side like you did on some of the other streets? And so that we don't have this snow plowing issue in the neighborhood?
Yeah, we, we do have streets that are, are signed for no parking on one side of the road. Um, that, that is an option, yes, that, that could be considered. Um, if, if the council or the neighborhood is, is interested in only allowing parking on one side, sometimes our, our issue with, with only allowing parking is you get into these older neighborhoods that have, uh, older design where homes are closer, uh, garages are smaller, driveways are maybe one vehicle in width. You get more, just, just because of the number of people living in home, you get people parking on the street. And when you start to restrict it to one side parking, that starts to impact property owners because of the, the narrower lots, the smaller garages and things like that. So we, we could, if, if the council so chooses, we could, we could look at that as restricting it to one side and, and narrowing up the roadway. That's, that is an option, but there are impacts to doing that.
Do we have parking on one side on any of those streets, any of those, um, places?
I, I don't believe there are parking restrictions up in that area, no.
And of course, we'd have to check with the other neighbors and stuff, too. Nothing we could take care of tonight. Anybody else? If not, counsel, we need a resolution ordering improvement, approving plans and specifications and ordering advertisement for bids. Counsel?
So move the resolution.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Dinkler.
Councilmember King.
Aye.
Austin.
Aye.
Jordal.
Aye.
Carolyn.
Aye.
Councilmember Largie Anderson.
Aye.
Resolution passes five zero, Your Honor.
Thank you. Number seven is a public hearing on street improvements on Project 3-A-16, Sixth Street Southeast, Twelfth Avenue to Sixteenth Avenue Southeast, and Sixteenth Avenue Southeast, Sixth Street to Eighth Street Southeast. Stephen.
Um, projector just went a little bit dark on us, so I apologize for that. Um, there we go. It's back up. Uh, this map is a little bit more color-coded. The area that the mayor just described is highlighted in green. Uh, we've looked at this area as a multi-phase project over multiple years. Uh, the area in red, Fifth Street and Fifteenth Avenue, we completed in 2011. Now this year, we're looking at the area in green, followed in 2017 by the area designated in blue. Again, trying to break up the area so that, try to limit the impact to people and how far they have to walk during a construction project. Uh, these are just, again, some examples of the roadway condition in this neighborhood. And like the other projects that we have already talked about, this one, on, uh, we'll remove the existing asphalt pavement. Uh, in this case, uh, north of Sixth, excuse me, Sixth Street, north of Thirteenth Avenue, it's, uh, that was, that was the short dead end to the north of Thirteenth Avenue. Limited amount of traffic in that area, so we're just going to look at a mill and overlay for those folks in there. They are assessed accordingly for that, you'll see that later. Uh, for the most part, the curb and gutter is going to remain in place wherever we can keep it. Uh, if it's in good, if it's in good condition, has good falls, we will look to keep the curb and gutter in place and just work out in that asphalt roadway. Again, replacing any deficient sidewalk panels. Um, there is one sidewalk section that is missing that we are proposing to have filled in, and we did speak with the property owner at the informational meeting, talked to him about it. And, uh, after we discussed some different things, he, he, I do not, I believe he went away, uh, accepting that idea. Um, I think his original issue was that, uh, in our assessments, we were assessing him for this installation of sidewalk where it's been our policy that the first time the sidewalk goes in, we do not assess them. They are just then required to maintain and repair it thereafter. So after we clarified that with the homeowner, I seemed to take that as a, as a positive and was going to go away with that. But the, on your map here, right, um, where the green line intersects Thirteenth Avenue there, I don't have my pointer with me, I apologize, but there is a small section of sidewalk adjacent to Thirteenth Avenue that is missing, and we will look to fill in that gap as part of this project. We did something very similarly over on Fifth Street, uh, the corner of Fifth Street and Thirteenth Avenue. There was a, a section of sidewalk that was missing there. And with Woods and School being so close here, the, the adjacent property owner was actually, um, blowing a path through his grass where the sidewalk would be. So when we proposed putting in sidewalk there, he was actually very happy because now he had a hard surface to blow instead of blowing across his grass. So, um, in this case, both of these property owners, one back in 2011, and now this one here in, in 2016, seems to be satisfied with that approach. So, uh, other things that we will be doing there, um, with, without removing the curb and gutter, that we're allowed to salvage a lot of that, uh, boulevard and driveways, so that'll, it will minimize the impact to those. Underground Utilities, uh, will look to replace the storm sewer again. There's, there's a high groundwater table in this area. That's something that we will have to battle during the course of the construction project. Um, anytime we do any digging and we get down below about four feet, we start to hit groundwater. These, uh, homes in this area pump a lot of, uh, with their sun pumps, a lot of water, so we want to make sure that we're accommodating that as part of our design with the storm sewer and also the tile lines. We'll, we'll look to line the sanitary sewers in this entire area to, to try to, uh, reduce inflow and infiltration. Um, that, what, by lining that sewer main, we're able to, uh, eliminate or greatly reduce the infiltration in the main, we're not able to do anything with that individual property owner's private service. That's something that they would need to take care of sometime in the future on their own if it becomes an issue. So we are able to correct the main and that infiltration, but not the, not the individual service. Again, Austin Utilities has plans for water main construction. Uh, that'll probably be a little bit unique in this area, again, because of the high groundwater table, how they look to tackle that. And then we'll install some future electrical crossings, uh, for the Austin Utilities Electric Department. Um, we call this project a two-phase project, but really it's a two-year project. Um, the Sixth Street, Sixteenth Avenue area will be constructed in 2016. We'll work to get that, uh, project completed, uh, when school is out, so after, after school is released in June, and then look to have it completed before school starts in September. And then, uh, we'll reevaluate that 2017 project next year at this time. Again, we have those same, um, project benefits, same assessments and interest rate, same assessment option, oh, excuse me, let me go back. I mentioned, uh, the one block north of Thirteenth Avenue is going to be a mill and overlay. You can see there, uh, we have a, a mill and overlay rate of fifteen dollars and seventy-five cents per foot, because there's a much greater, much, uh, reduced level of, of work required for that, so therefore they are, are charged less. Also, sorry, also note on this one, we have a curb and gutter rate as well of thirteen dollars per lineal foot. There are some sections out here where there is no existing curb and gutter. Homeowners are charged for curb and gutter the very first time that it goes in. Um, after that, they are not charged again for curb and gutter. So in this case, if there are sections that are missing, there would be an extra thirteen dollars per lineal foot for that curb. Again, same assessment rates, and that's all that I have.
Counsel, any input? Questions, comments? Once again, public hearing, is there anybody here tonight that wants to address the counsel on this project? If not, we need a resolution ordering improvement, approving plans and specifications and ordering advertisement for bids.
So move the resolution.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Dinkler.
Councilmember King.
Aye.
Austin.
Aye.
Jordal.
Aye.
Carolyn.
Aye.
Councilmember Largie Anderson.
Aye.
Resolution passes five zero, Your Honor.
Thank you. Item number eight is a resolution, uh, public hearing on street improvements on Project 4-A-16, Four-A-16, Fourteenth Avenue Northeast, Eighth Street to Dead End, Thirteenth Avenue Northeast, Eighth Street to DOT Turnback, Eleventh Avenue Northeast, Eighth Street to Tenth Street, and Ninth Street Northeast, Tenth Avenue to Twelfth Avenue. Stephen.
Yes, the area you described is up on the map in green. Um, the unhighlighted roads in that same area, we actually completed in 2015, so that was the first phase of a two-year project. So again, uh, except for Eighth Street, uh, again, those unhighlighted roads were completed in 2015. And the green ones are proposed for this coming year in 2016, again, another two-year phased project. Uh, you know, looking at some of the existing conditions in this area, there is no curb and gutter, uh, in this whole development of South Crane Edition, so we will look to install curb and gutter to improve the drainage. And, you know, the roadways out here are likely in that nineteen-fifties vintage, so we will look to, now is the time, um, they've kind of lived their useful life, they're about over sixty years old, so they have, um, they've serviced the, this neighborhood well, but it's time to replace them. So with this project, we will remove the existing asphalt pavement, install concrete curb and gutter on Ninth Street, Eleventh Avenue and Thirteenth Avenue. We will mill and overlay asphalt pavement on Fourteenth Avenue and a small section of Eleventh Street. We'll, again, replace any deficient sidewalk, install handicap accessible ramps, replace all the, the end drives as part of the project, along with the boulevards. Uh, underground utility improvements, uh, we, we've completed the, many of the improvements as part of the first phase last year, but we will now, uh, finish up, tie up loose ends as part of the project. We'll extend some sanitary sewer on Eleventh Avenue. Uh, we've looked at the sanitary sewer lines, there are a couple blocks that we will be lining, again, for infiltration. And the Austin Utilities has water main replacement, and we will also look at some electrical conduit crossings. Will, this project will likely be, many of the property owners in this area are familiar with, uh, the scope of work because we just completed, uh, one project this year, be very similar to what we do this coming year, so we'll look to begin about the same time in July, and will be completed in late fall. Again, we have those same project benefits when we come in and reconstruct- when we come in, um, and reconstruct the project. Again, same assessment rates. We've got the forty-three dollars per foot for residential, fifty, fifteen seventy-five for mill and overlay, and again, there's no curb and gutter existing in this area, so we will assess adjacent property owners, thirteen dollars per lineal foot for curb. We talked about the sidewalk assessments, the interest rate as well is the same, and again, those same assessment options. That is all I have.
Counsel.
Question. Mr. Lang, you mentioned that, uh, that on this project, that the streets were constructed probably in the fifty's. Um, just for curiosity's sake, what do you figure the lifespan is of a typical asphalt road and concrete?
Um, an asphalt road, we, we expect an asphalt road to last thirty-five years. Uh, that's what our assessments are based on, and we, we expect them to last thirty-five, uh, from an assessment standpoint, but really, they're lasting somewhere in that forty, forty-five year range before they start to get to the condition where they need to be replaced. Thank you.
Anything else from the council? If not, once again, public hearing. Is there anybody here tonight that wants to address the counsel on this issue? Yes, sir. Why don't you step up to the podium, give us your name and your address and your concern?
Hi, I'm Dale Christensen, the pastor of Crane Chapel, and the, uh, the block on the lower left is, uh, pretty much Crane Chapel, and across the street is parking lot. And, uh, last year, we paid about twelve thousand for assessments on this project, and this year, we're scheduled to pay forty-two thousand. Um, but it comes out to about a thousand a year from what Stephen just said, so that sounds like a pretty good deal after all.
So you're here to congratulate us?
Yeah. The street definitely, the streets definitely need to be done, and we're glad to see them done. My request is if you'll look at, uh, the, the bottom of the map, the, uh, there's a sidewalk on both sides of the street, but on the right side of the street, it, uh, our property is all parking lot, and so basically what we're doing is we have an apron that goes to the street, and we have parking lot there. We don't see a need. Uh, our assessment is thirty-nine hundred dollars to repair that sidewalk, and it seems, uh, unnecessary when there's one on the other side, and when people who are going around the block can just cut through the parking lot, which is what they do. Uh, there's no street that continues. Uh, Ninth Street ends there, at the bottom of the, uh, plat map, and so that sidewalk isn't leading to anywhere else. Mostly, our observation is that people who are walking down that way are on their way to Eighth Street and then further south. So our request is that we, uh, we vacate that sidewalk on the right side of the road.
Stephen?
You can stay in case you have any other follow-up questions. Um, so it's very rare that we remove sidewalk once it's already in place. I believe last year was probably the first time that I'm aware of that we did it. Uh, that was a unique circumstance where there was sidewalk continuous along one side of the roadway for, um, six blocks, and on the other side of the roadway, there were only three homes that had sidewalk. So at that time, we, we talked about it with the council and required the adjacent property owners, those three property owners that wanted the sidewalk removed, we required them to, uh, make a written request. We then brought it to the council at a work session. Uh, we were able to review it, make a recommendation to the council at that time, and then the council decided on it. Um, if, if the church is requesting that same item here to have sidewalk removed, I would propose that we go through that same process where we ask for a written request from the church, then, uh, give the staff some time to review it, um, make a presentation to the council, and then a determination can be made if that sidewalk should be replaced or, or eliminated. Uh, this, this situation here, one other thing to note, yes, that is all parking lot there on the east side of Eleventh Street. Uh, right now, without any curb and gutter in place, it's pretty much just all driveway, kind of a free-for-all there. Uh, we do have width limits on our driveways of twenty-four feet for residential driveways and thirty-two feet for commercial driveways. That is something that is a state aid requirement, so we apply that pretty regularly throughout the community. So in this area, where there, uh, is currently all asphalt, s- some of that asphalt will be removed in the boulevard. The driveway will be narrowed up probably to that thirty-two foot, twenty-four to thirty-two foot width, and then Grass Boulevard will be, uh, installed there. We'll, we'll look to incorporate driveways where there are alleyways. We won't put a driveway, so if somebody drives in right where there's cars parked, we'll look at their striping pattern in their parking lot and, and lay out the driveways based on that. So again, back to the sidewalk, that would be my recommendation, would be to request that written request, and so we can put together a report for the council to make a informed decision.
Counsel?
Stephen, remind me that, uh, those three houses you referenced, I believe, am I imagining it? Did, or did the property owners bear some cost in that removal of those sidewalk panels?
Yep, that's correct. We still assess them for the removal rate, and then, uh, there was a little bit of cost for restoration of the boulevard as well.
So we'd be looking at a similar cost here?
Yes, yes. But, uh, the, the thirty-nine hundred that you referenced for, for new construction, it, to replace it and, uh, restore that area with a boulevard, would probably be about a quarter of that cost would be an example of, uh, the quarter of the cost to just remove it and leave it out as to removing it and replacing it.
Okay. Well, then we need... Do we need a motion? I guess I would recommend to the, to Crane Chapel to request that in writing, and then we can review it at a work session.
Can I make one more comment?
Yes, sir.
I believe when that sidewalk was built, there were homes where the parking lot is now, and those have been removed through the years.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Close? Okay. So then we table the rest of this resolution until then?
No. I, I would recommend we continue. We can, we can make that adjustment later based on council direction.
Okay. So counsel, or is there anybody else in the audience that wants to address the counsel on this project? If not, we need a resolution ordering improvement and approving plans and specifications, and ordering advertisement for bids.
So move. Second.
Mr. Dangert.
Councilmember King.
Aye.
Austin.
Aye.
Jordal.
Aye.
Carolyn.
Aye.
Councilmember Large Anderson.
Aye.
Resolution passes five zero, your honor.
Thank you. Item number nine is a public hearing on street improvement project five dash A sixteen, Fourth Drive Southwest, Turtle Creek Bridge to Twenty-Fourth Avenue Southwest. Stephen.
Yes, the area you described is shown on the map up above. Um, this project would, is a joint project between the city and county. Uh, this is a county road. The city of Austin has a unique agreement with the county, whereas we take care of the county roads in Austin, and the county takes care of the bridges. Uh, it's a unique agreement, one of the few. It goes back into the nineteen sixty's timeframe, and, uh, there's many other city engineers, yeah, around that are jealous of the agreement that we have because, uh, it works out well for the city. We don't have to have bridge engineers on staff and things like that that are required to, to monitor and maintain bridges. So that is how we are involved with this project, being that it is a county road. Um, again, a joint project with the county, whereas, uh, some of this property is located in the city limits, and some of it is located outside of the city limits. It was originally graded in nineteen thirty-six. It was last resurfaced in nineteen eighty-five. Uh, current conditions, it's a rural design with steep ditches and a twenty-four foot wide asphalt roadway surface. You can see some of those pictures there of deteriorated pavement. Uh, a lot of that is showing through because of failures in the subgrade, so a, a resurfacing project at this point would not correct, would be a very short-term Band-Aid for a project in this condition because of the subsoils. So with this project, uh, the plan is to re- um, remove the asphalt pavement, install curb and gutter. We would widen the roadway, uh, from twenty-four feet to thirty-eight feet in width. Again, I mentioned earlier that our standard is thirty-six. In this case, uh, with this being a state aid roadway, we have to meet certain state aid requirements. We're required to build this roadway, um, with eight-foot parking lanes and eleven-foot driving lanes, so when you figure one eight-foot parking lane on each side, a driving lane in each direction that comes up to thirty-eight feet in width. Um, we are also proposing a ten-foot wide pedestrian trail to be constructed on the west side of the roadway. That would be constructed from the, uh, Turtle Creek Bridge adjacent to Calvary Cemetery, and would extend south. Uh, it's, it's currently being proposed to extend all the way south to County Road Twenty-Eight throughout the entire length of the project. And then also, as part of the project, we, uh, with the new curb and gutter, we'll fill in those ditches, and we'll do some re-grading behind the curb and, and restoration of those Grass Boulevard areas. Underground utility improvements, again, we'll fill in those ditches. We'll install some extensive storm sewer to improve the drainage in this area. We'll also install subsurface drainage tile to improve the underground drainage that helps in the spring when the frost is coming out, helps that subsurface dry out faster and become more stable. Austin Utilities, they are, uh, looking at some underground electrical crossings and the possibility of having to relocate some poles as part of the project. Uh, but for the most part, the underground sanitary sewer and the water main are relatively new. Uh, they're probably both in the range of, uh, fifteen or so years old, so they're, they're relatively new, have been, been constructed through annexations in this area. So we do not anticipate, uh, very much if any, water or sanitary sewer work. Construction for this project, with it being, um, a state and federal project, there are some, uh, plan reviews that are required of the state, so we're, we don't have full control over the start of this project, but we're anticipating somewhere in mid-July with a completion date in the fall. This is probably, most of our street reconstruction projects are about a three-month project. This one may go slightly faster than that because there are limited underground infrastructure replacements, but again, this project is much longer than our normal four-block, six-block street reconstruction project. So again, with, uh, project benefits, we have those same project benefits in this, in this area. Same project assessments. Uh, again, there is no curb and gutter out here currently, so adjacent property owners would be assessed thirteen dollars per foot for curb and gutter. Uh, folks in the Dinsmore Acres area, that would be from, uh, south of Twenty-Second Avenue to Twenty-Fourth Avenue, uh, those folks, that, that roadway is in fairly good condition. Dinsmore, uh, sanitary sewer project occurred back in two thousand and two, so in this case, we are not assessing them for roadway repairs. We're only assessing them for curb and gutter, which they currently do not have. And again, interest rate, four-point-seven, four-point-five percent, excuse me. Uh, a se- again, same assessment options as we described before. I'll just cover them one more time. Um, bills will be sent out in the fall, late August, early September. At that time, they can pay the entire amount in full prior to October thirty-first without interest. Option two, pay at least fifty percent through, um, prior to October thirty-first. The remainder would go on their taxes, spread out over fifteen years with interest. Option three, do nothing. The entire amount goes on their taxes, spread out over fifteen years with interest. Uh, they're first gonna see that in two thousand and seventeen, and again, if it does go on their taxes, that interest rate is four-point-five percent. And finally, if they meet certain agent income guidelines, they could choose to have it deferred on their taxes until such time that they pay off that assessment. And again, it would be assessed on their taxes at four-point-five percent interest. That is all I have.
Anything for the counsel?
Yeah, your honor, this, uh, this certainly affects a number of people that have come to voice their opinion on this. Uh, and I think Stephen's probably pretty pleased with the way the, the, the public hearing's gone so far, but I think there's a, I wanna give the folks out there a good chance to, to voice their opinion. My, my first thought when I saw this is similar to the, the, my reaction to it is similar to the, the calls I've received and the emails, is that I, I don't necessarily disagree with the widening of the street. Uh, I, I, I think the biggest hangup is that ten-foot wide bike trail. You look at the average home out there, we don't have the density on that drive, uh, that length of, of roadway. I think it's about twenty-four, twenty-five homes, uh, all with some decent-sized property, all with some decent-sized driveways and garages. Part, public parking, I don't know that it's a real necessity on that street, but I'm not totally opposed to it. I think the biggest hangup that you're gonna hear is, is that bike trail. Some of these folks are gonna lose about, uh, twenty-four feet of property, if not more. Um, that's, that's a good chunk, and I, I always give the property owners that are affected a good weight in this. The sidewalk issues in that area have come up before. If I remind counsel, it, it, this area is developed in all the, almost, the entire areas without sidewalks for the last forty years that the place has been developed. Um, so I, I just wanna give the, the neighbors a good chance to voice their opinion on this, but I would certainly approve, or approve what I'm seeing. Uh, if we could eliminate that bike trail and make it a, if you're eliminating, if you're adding fourteen feet to the street, I would think a bike lane or a walk lane could be added like we've done on Fourth Street all the way to Skinner's Hill.
I just wanna add that I've also received calls and, and concerns about the width and how much per, individual property that this, uh, would affect, so that we, we need to take a close look at how we can balance what is required and what is needed with the state aid that Stephen talked about, um, in it, with, with the bike lane as, as Steve, Mr. King just alluded to. So we're certainly, we're looking forward to getting some feedback from the citizens.
Stephen, what does the state require us to do now? We've got state aid money for this road. What, what are our options? I mean, what are we allowed to do as far as this road? I mean, can we take, you know, can we make modifications to this, or, or, you know, what, what are our options on this?
Um, I have, I have checked that out, so this, this project also has some federal funding with it as well. Um, so when we pres- the, the federal funding is a competitive funding source. When we presented this project to our, our, um, competing, uh, cities throughout our district, we represented it as proposed with a thirty-eight-foot wide roadway and a pedestrian trail. Um, and that helps us to score high to make us eligible for the grant. I, I could say that if we had not proposed a pedestrian trail, if we hadn't proposed a, a pedestrian corridor, we can call it a trail, we can call it a sidewalk, whatever, a corridor to get pedestrians off the road, if we hadn't proposed that, I can say with about ninety-nine percent certainty, we would not have received the grant. Now that we have received the grant, if we want to change it and take the trail out, take the sidewalk out, the pedestrian corridor out, that is possible. Uh, I did check with our, my state contact today. That is possible. It doesn't, uh, there's some extra paperwork. There's some extra things we need to go through, but, um, that does not jeopardize our grant. I was concerned that since we represented it with a trail originally, that it would jeopardize the ability for us to get the grant, but he has indicated that that is not the case. Um, so it's, would be based on council discretion. Um, but again, our, our goal with it was to provide an off-road pedestrian corridor. We call it a trail, but in this area, it's pretty much like a sidewalk where it serves the adjacent property owners and also the feeder streets that would come into it. It connects into our, our local trail system that then spreads throughout the community.
Now, the way it's laid out, there's a trail and a parking, or is that, is that the same spot, or, I mean, if we take the trail out, is it still gonna be parking there, or how would that affect it?
The plan is that the tray, the parking is between the curbs, and the trail would actually be behind the curb on the west side.
Mm-huh.
Um, wherever we can, it would be our goal to separate the trail from the road and move it back a little ways so that there's some sto- snow storage, like a Grass Boulevard, like all the sidewalks that you see in established areas of town. Um, in some areas, that might be prohibitive. We may have to have the trail right behind the curb in some areas, but it is our goal to get a little bit of gap there to provide a spot to put snow in the wintertime. Um, yeah, that's what I'll say.
Is the, is the trail, the, the space designated as the trail and the sidewalk two separate, or is this synonymous?
Same thing.
Or the same?
Same thing. Um, I think the, the goal would be to provide a pedestrian area, and, and a five-foot sidewalk would be the minimum for that. That would allow for walkers. Um, since we are doing, building a brand-new project, the goal, so if we provide, provided a five-foot sidewalk, it would get walkers off the road. Um, since we're providing, building a brand-new project, the goal is to build a ten-foot sidewalk or trail, which will get both walkers and bikers off the roadway.
Really? Thank you.
Okay. So, counsel, is there anything else before we go to the public portion? Okay, now I know there's people here to address counsel. Um, go ahead and, Steve?
Uh, Steve Keim, five zero nine, Fifteenth Avenue Southwest. Um, there's Dean, City Council. Uh, you know, I, when I first heard about this project, I think that, uh, my first thought, and I've said this before, Austin is a small I've said this before, Austin is a small city with big opportunities, and I think this is a big opportunity. I was reflecting on some meetings we had just last week, Sustainability Task Force, Sustainability Task Force Focus Group with our consultants on the comprehensive plan, and then our comprehensive plan meeting, just talking about all the things that go into that. And we know that complete streets, green streets, all of those items are a part of that. And so this opportunity, I think, to take that step, you know, it's, it would be a perfect opportunity to use those ideas, those principles, and implement them into this plan. So I support the plan as stated. You know, I think we talk about trails and this specific trail in particular, as Stephen pointed out, it is, will be connected to our city system, and in my vision, I see it going even further. As we go out to Twenty-Eighth, County Road Twenty-Eighth, we can connect up, go a little farther east along County Twenty-Eighth, and in the future, there's a railroad bed out there that could go all the way to Lyle as a trail. I mean, we have to look beyond, I think, what we're looking, you know, this is part of it, but we need to take those steps to get going. And inasmuch as maybe we'll say, well, we should put it someplace else, or maybe it'd be better someplace else, we need to start somewhere. And I think to take those initial steps, get the process going, and it's all, I think it's consistent with what we're trying to accomplish in the city. And the city, with all the things we have, the initiatives with our bike-friendly application, things like that, they all fit with this project and this design. So I appreciate you taking the time to consider this as it is. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Steve. Anybody else? Sir?
My name is Scott Wurmanjer. I live at twenty-four oh three Fourth Drive Southwest, kind of in the middle of that project there. And my biggest concern is the bike trail. And I have a lot of concerns. I sent out an email, I think everybody got it except for Mr. Clark there, and I, and I don't know if you sent the response, did you guys all get the response back from Mr. Lane? So you have those answers. Some of my concerns are, I'll just go through the email that you've seen before. First one was, what was the purpose of this? And, you know, I was told that, you know, it was, it needs to be reconstructed, some of it's bad. Yeah, the middle part's bad, but where I live, it's good because it's new, and the bridge was new, so not all of it's bad. So just to clarify, it was built in like two thousand and two. My, my question, well, I guess it, it doesn't matter at this point on why we didn't do it when we did the rest of the road, but. It says that this is a joint project by the city and the state, so I would like to know, what is the percentage? He said that the state or the federal is putting in a grant. How much of that grant is covered? If we don't do what they say and widen it thirty-eight feet, if say we widen it less, how much is it going to cost? Is that going to cost us more than if we do it wider and the federal kicks in or not? Do we have an answer, how much we would get if we didn't use the state funding?
Okay, Stephen?
The federal grant is capped at just over a million dollars. This is estimated to be a one-point-three-million-dollar project. So whether we narrow a road, widen a road, whatever it might be, the, the grant is capped, and then local state aid dollars are used to pay the surplus. So in, in any case, the federal grant will not cover more than eighty percent of the total project. So if, if, say we had a million-dollar project, it wouldn't be a hundred percent federal, even though we have a million-dollar grant, it would be eighty percent federal, twenty percent state. So it would be eight-hundred thousand federal, two-hundred thousand local dollars, state, state aid dollars. So again, that's our, our funding source.
So do we know how much it would cost if we didn't make it as wide? If we just made like one lane, widened one side of the road or anything?
I, no, I don't have those details. The estimate is based on this design, and we didn't run estimates for other designs.
My question is, running this bike trail, you know, where, I asked where it would end, they said it would end out at Twenty-Eighth. My question is, why would we run a bike trail out to a road that's a dangerous road? For Drayken, when you go out there, there's no shoulders or anything, so if you bike out to there, it, you know, what do you do? Turn around and come back? I don't know the purpose of it. To me, it doesn't pass the common sense test.
There, I mean, I live about four houses away from Fourth Street, and you know, if you live there, there's a lot of bike traffic on there right now. I mean, there's a lot of people that...
There's, there's a little bit. I live right on it, and I see people once in a while walk by, but it's very little, it's very limited. You know, could we pull up a map? You got internet on here? Can we pull up a map?
Oh, there's a map right there.
Do maps, so we can, it only shows a little area. My concern is, if you don't, if you can't pull it up, I can hand you one. Give everybody up here a map, so you can kind of see what I'm talking about. I don't think I have enough for everyone.
Can you put it on the screen?
Stephen, can we put that on the projector?
Put it on the screen.
What's that?
Oh. Never mind.
We can share.
We got one, two.
We, we can share.
So my concern is, is this. If you look at these maps on here, if you look at, at map one, it kind of has a, a big area, a bigger area than just a little section that we're talking about here. So the people affected, if you're looking at that road, if you look at, at the road going along the river there that we want to do, and you look, everything from the river, everything east of the river, they can't get to us, they can't access this road, they can't access this bike trail unless they go way around to get to it. So there's nobody going to access it from there. Nobody lives south of there, so nobody's going to come in from the south and access this trail, hardly anyone. And to me, it would make more sense that over on Twelfth Street, you've already got a wide road, you already have a sidewalk going down there, there's very few houses that are on that sidewalk. My proposal would be move the bike trail over there. It's only a couple blocks out of our way from everybody that lives in our area to go over there. You got a sidewalk there, if you need it a little wider, widen the sidewalk that's already there. That road ends up at the T where people can go straight and keep going out of town if they want to, or they can turn and go left or right. If you come out at our road, you have to go left or right, and you're going to run into that T anyways. So you got this whole section over here of people that if you make the bike trail come over there, they got to go past that road to our road, go on the bike trail, get to the T, and then go back over to head south. It just, it doesn't pass the common sense test to me. It just, it makes no sense, I can't figure it out. You know, everything, nobody's going to access it from the other side, everybody's going to either come from town or the other way, from the west side. So it, it, you know, it doesn't pass the common sense test. We got a lot of houses there. The reason I moved out there, and I'm, and I'm sure a lot of other ones, I know my neighbor who's out of town now, is because we wanted privacy and we wanted security. You put a walking, a bike path or something, and you get some more people on there, and they're walking slow, now they're walking and they're looking through the houses and they're doing that, and they're going through slow. You got other roads down there that already have sidewalks, they can do that. You know, there's, if you look at Turtle Creek, you look on both sides of Turtle Creek and any of the neighborhoods down there, show me one that's got sidewalks on there and it's got bike lanes. There isn't. So why do we need one here that, where it doesn't make any sense?
Okay.
As far as the road itself, I'm not so concerned. If you want to widen it, you widen it. You know, I got some issues about drainage because I have a sump pump that runs every day. You can go to my house right now and see the water in the backyard from it raining. I don't know if that'll help or hinder. I really don't. I don't think we need two lanes because there's very little houses. Everybody's got big driveways, and they're all used to parking in their driveways. If we had, you know, if we could get by with one lane, that would, I think, suffice. You could have people walking on that lane because there's hardly going to be any cars, people could bike on it. So to spend the money on a bike path, to me, is just kind of ridiculous, and I don't know the reason for it. Another thing I'd like to say is, when it comes to the assessments, when we put in a curb and gutter, I asked on my utility bill what this stormwater fee is for, and they told me it was for sewer, it's for curb and gutter. So I've been paying four dollars a month for however many years. So say it was, say it's been ten years, that's like four-hundred-and-eighty bucks, can I put that towards it since I've already prepaid?
That's...
We're getting charged for a curb and gutter right now. I would like to know if we can put that money that we've already prepaid into this project so we don't have to pay as much when it comes to time.
The, the information on the storm sewer, on stormwater fee on your utility bill is for underground infrastructure, it's not for the curb. It's for the catch basin inlets, it's for the piping and everything underneath the ground. I know that...
That we paid for when we put the driveways in?
No, no, this would, well, this is, this is also for ongoing maintenance of that existing system. So it's, there are areas around town where we don't have existing storm sewer, like Fourth Drive because it has ditches, they have been charged. But the theory behind that is they're using roadways throughout the community that have a storm sewer system. They're not just driving on their road, they're taking Fourth Street north where it turns into curb and gutter north of the bridge, it had, that section has existing storm sewer, so therefore that fee is applied throughout the community.
Okay. All right, we need to give some other people an opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you.
Who else? Sir? Go ahead, he's already up, we'll get this gentleman here.
Your Honor, members of the council?
Did you name and your address?
My name is Eric Harder. I live at two zero zero four Fourth Drive Southwest. The first item I want to point out is, Mr. Lang said at the beginning of the presentation that you're seeing the same presentation that we saw last Monday, which is not true. On the eighth, we were given the picture that's on the right-hand side, we were given the pay schedule, and we were given verbally what was going to happen. And that verbal included moving it from twenty-four feet wide to thirty-eight. At that time, he said adding a eight-foot boulevard and then a ten-foot bike path. When asked, where is it going to go on the left side or how we're going to expand the roadway, it was said that ideally it would be seven feet in each direction, I heard eight feet tonight, and that in some places it would have to move, all fourteen feet of the new roadway would have to move one direction because of the land. When asked about my specific spot, it looked like that I was going to, the road was going to come in toward my house, or this project toward my house, anywhere from twenty-five to thirty-two feet, which to me is a significant, excuse me, a significant amount. I sent an email to Mr. Lang. Well, first of all, at the meeting, I did complain about not having drawings, that was something that we could actually look at and discuss. He said that those would be done at the end of February or early May, or March, and so I haven't seen those yet, and I'd really like to know, how far is it moving on my property and how far it's going to come up toward my house. On the eleventh, I was sent an email with a picture, which I'm surprised wasn't shown here as well, of the potential, and the bike path, bike trails anywhere from next to the roadway to five feet to ten feet, and then back to the roadway. And I still didn't get a drawing that went all the way to Twenty-Eighth or County Twenty-Eighth, so I'm a little disappointed at that. As I look at it, I do not want a trail that goes through my yard. I heard a little bit ago from a gentleman that this would be consistent, and I don't know, and I hope somebody can tell me, where else in town that we ran an eight-foot boulevard and a ten-foot bike path through the middle of somebody's property. And so I, as much as I am happy with the, trying to develop the park and trail system, I don't think that it should be going through a private person's yard to be able to get that to happen. Like said earlier, we, on Fourth Street, we were able to put the bike lanes in on that, on each side of the road. I don't know why that can't continue. Because once they get to the end on twenty, on County Twenty-Eighth, we were told that they would just jump on that county road and they would be able to ride. So I don't understand why they can't ride on the road that is, is being proposed now. I have no objection with the road being resurfaced, it is bad. I don't really have an objection to being, having it widened, but I do have kind of an objection for it to go from a rural to an urban with the curb and gutter, the boulevard, and the bike trail. I do have a couple of concerns. One of them is that ditch helps my sump pump drain, and I'm concerned about when that gets leveled off, if I'm going to be able to have that same drainage or if it's going to go back into the house. And the other thing is, one of our second ward members is not here tonight to be able to express an opinion and vote, so I am concerned a little bit about that. I don't understand where, if this is going to be a lot of money from the feds, and it is kind of important, why we weren't involved with that at the beginning before that grant was written to the feds. I guess I just don't understand that. Why wouldn't you talk to the residents, kind of see what they're looking at, kind of see what their feeling is before you go ahead and spend all this time going to the feds? And the one, my most concern is how invasive this trail would be, how it's going to reduce my property value. And so that, those are the concerns that I have. I am asking the council tonight to not vote on this, to delay this until we're able to see some drawings, to see how it's going to actually be built, not just in a, we're going to widen, we're going to do this, we're going to do that. Because I know once the vote is taken, then it's going to be up to whoever's designing this to have free rein with this, and I'm asking you, just so we can have some information and have a full picture before we vote on that. Thank you. Excuse me, I got one other, sorry. If I got these numbers wrong, please let me know. The feds are going to give us eight-hundred thousand, the state two-hundred thousand, the county three to four-hundred thousand, which is about the same price of the project. And so we're going to assess the owners on that above and beyond what the cost of the project is? Is that correct?
Stephen?
Just to correct those numbers, we have a federal grant in, in the amount of about a million dollars. The state aid, city or county state aid, gas tax allotment in the amount of three-hundred thousand dollars, that's the one-point-three-million-dollar project cost. The assessments, so we, we assess approximately a quarter of the project, we assess, our goal is to assess about fifty percent of the project cost on a normal reconstruction project. So all those projects that we assessed previously, that we talked about those previous four projects, a quarter of the project cost is assessed to one side, a quarter is assessed to the other side, and the city pays for the center fifty percent. In a project like this where we have a grant, we still assess project costs. We take that money that we gain from those assessments, and we use that to pay for other, that fifty percent in the center of the roadway on other projects. So we try to treat people fair and apply those assessment rates throughout the entire community, and that way people don't receive a benefit or get penalized depending on what roadway they live on. You're not, you don't receive a benefit and get a free road because you live on, in this case, Fourth Drive Southwest, and then if you live in an older part of town, an older neighborhood, you're assessed for the cost. We try, we apply that assessment rate equally out over the community.
Okay, does that answer your question?
How much money was coming from the county?
Three-hundred thousand dollars from the state gas tax.
Okay.
That's something that both the city and the county receive.
And one last question is, the county can't put this road in and just not have curb and gutter and have it be that same width?
Just to answer a couple of those questions, yes, the county could put the project in. Again, this is a joint city-county project, we've worked on this together, we've worked on this proposed resident, urban design, even though it is a county road in the city limits, we looked at an urban design. We have, we do have some rural section road... roads in the city, very few when compared to all of our hundred-and-fifty miles in the community. Uh, when we talk about taking people's property and putting the trail on people's property, we're, we're not doing that. We're putting the trail in the public right-of-way. There, there, everyone has property lines, right-of-way lines. Um, if we went back on someone's property to put a trail or, or to grade back onto someone's property, we would have to get an easement for that. Uh, at this time, um, after talking with the county engineer, there are not any plans in the city limits to acquire property for easement. So this trail that we're proposing is going to go in the public right-of-way. It's not going back on people's property.
So we're not going on people's property for this project to, I mean, you know-
Yeah, we're asking on that.
Pardon?
Um, based on what I've heard from the county engineer with where they are laying it out, there is not a plan to acquire property, uh, beyond the right-of-way line.
Okay.
And in most cases, the right-of-way is approximately thirty-three feet each side of center line. Um, where Mr. Harder lives and where the ba, uh, the church is located, there's actually additional right-of-way. The right-of-way line, um, comes up closer to their home. There was a platted, uh, service drive where there, that never got built in that area. So the right-of-way line is actually back quite a ways from, um, the existing roadway.
Okay. Sir?
The gentleman's-
I'm Dr. David De Four, and I live on Fourth Drive Southwest.
What's your address, sir?
Twenty-seven oh six. If you look at that little map there, you see the last green spot right there on Fourth? I own from, uh, ten feet the other side of that dark line to County Twenty-Eight.
Okay.
That's what I have. Now, the thing is, if you go, if you come out and park a car there with a speed trap, you would find that people come right from the corner there and they'll hit sixty, sixty-five miles an hour. And what do you think the speed limit is there?
Thirty.
Thirty. Now, I realize that it's, uh, taking your life in your own hands sometimes, especially after school and when people get off work. But there's a few things that really upset me. Number one is, I hate people to decide for me what I think personally is right and to cram it down my throat. Now, I, and I had a cardio rehab, and I walked every city street in town. And I'm telling you, there's people sitting here that don't have sidewalks. There are people sitting right here that have never shoveled their sidewalk. There, my wife and I drove around this afternoon. Half of the people sitting here have not shoveled their sidewalk to make it passable for someone else. Doesn't make sense to me. And if you take my property, if you take what you're telling me, and I pay taxes to the Senator the road, by the way, everybody does, if you take eighteen feet from the road to my house, people are going to walk within twelve feet of my picture window. You're going to take out two-hundred-year-old oak trees, one, two, three, four, oak trees along there, pine trees, part of my grove, and across the street, right, if you look at a little dark corner, right across the street by the field, that is another three-hundred-year-old oak tree. Gail Dennison lives there. When I told her we, I was going to address the council, she said, "I'm going to call," and she told me who she was going to call. I don't know. She says, "I love that tree the way it hangs over." You're going to le, you're going to lose an awful lot by widening the road, and I'm just asking you very nicely, if you're going to hit me with that much land, I have nine-and-a-half acres like that, you take eighteen to thirty feet right from the center of the road all the way down like this, all the way down like that, how many acres are you taking? More than I'm willing to give up. And if it's your choice, please, whatever you do, buy my property. I moved out there to be in the country. I wanted peace and quiet that goes on after six o'clock every night. I love to see the deer, the turkeys, even the raccoons, the possums, rabbits, and the squirrels in my yard. I feed some of them, you know? But it really, honest to God, hurts me when somebody comes marking on my front lawn like this with colors and says, "Oh, we're going to go this far." It's going to radically change, radically change my lifestyle that I paid for fifteen years ago. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Now, who did I miss, sir? Why did you-
Jim Burles. I live at fourteen oh five Sixteenth Avenue Southwest. And I strongly support what the city is doing to bring us into a community. We need to be forward-thinking, look to the future, and design that way. That road's not going to be rebuilt for another, you know, how many years? Now's the time to do it. Uh, having a bike path go by a home increases its value. On average in the U.S., I've heard the number of two thousand dollars. It'll be a plus for those neighbors. They may not realize it now, but when they go to sell the home, that will be a selling point. My daughter just recently moved from Washington, D.C. to a town down by St. Louis. One of the primary things they looked at-
Can we keep the, keep it down? If you want to talk, can you step outside? We're, um, kind of getting drowned out a little bit here. Okay, go ahead.
One of the, the, the primary things on their checklist, and they're, they're German types, so they have checklist, was to, is there a bike path in the area? And actually, in that area, it's a town of twenty-six thousand people. It's the county seat, about thirty miles away from St. Louis. A hundred-and-thirty-five miles of bike paths in that area. People go to it. It's a growing, expanding, booming area. Quality of life, it's a health issue. People nowadays like to get out and ride on their bikes, or I certainly do. You can't go from that southwest part of town safely out to Highway Twenty-Eight. The roads are just too narrow. The ditches are shaped like that. I mean, it, it's run for your life kind of a thing. So, having that bike path there will be a great thing, a great safety factor. Proceed, do it. We need it. Be leaders. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Ma'am? Oh, okay. One of you is right in front of the other one, so I guess I pointed at both of you at the same time. I'm sorry.
Okay. Mr. Mayor and council members, uh, I want to get back to the fact that-
I'm sorry, I didn't get your name.
I'm sorry, Sherri Weaver. I live at seven oh one Nineteenth Avenue Southwest. Uh, I would like to get back to the fact that it's not going to cost us a thing. We've already paid for, we're on a corner lot. We've paid for, uh, Nineteenth Avenue years ago. Uh, but for me, it is about the bike path. If you are a typical street, according to tonight's notes, was thirty-six feet, they are widening this one to thirty-eight feet, eight feet of parking on either side. I walk that street, I bike that street. I know how many people park there. I know how many people won't park there. I know that thirty-eight feet is fine. I'm, I'm good with that. So my issue is the bike path. Um, also, when we moved here fourteen years ago, I experienced the first hundred-year flood. And a few years later, was it three years later, we had another hundred-year flood and then another hundred-year flood, if I remember right. And I'm only fifty, so I can't really figure out the math here. But that road right now, because it is a rural road, it was raised, I believe, to protect us from the river on the other side. And if you lower that road, the Calvary Cemetery Road was flooded one year, and it was coming closer and closer and farther down that road. And I'm afraid you lower that road, we're going to be flooded, and we've never had that problem yet. Um, the other thing is the power pole relocation. Right now, they're on the east side of the road where there's also a lot of forest. And so, for the sake of an argument, I'd like to see the transparency. Where are these poles going to go? Where is this widening going to go? I'm all for the widening. I want that road wider. I, I, I have no problem with that. Um, and as far as the bike path, I bike out that way, and I've been on County Road Twenty-Eight, and I've been on one oh five. They're ungodly dangerous. And this to me is kind of like the bike path to nowhere. Maybe Sarah Palin had something to do with this. But there's really nowhere to go from the cemetery to Twenty-Eighth Street that's going to make me feel safer, unless you take Twenty-Eighth Street and you go all the way to Lyle, if that's what you're going to do, or all the way to Albert Lee, whatever, wherever that's going to be. And the future's great, but at this point, my yard is more precious to me. I bought it for the land, not for a bike path. So. Oh, and by the way, winter maintenance, we were told we would have to maintain a bike path. I will fight that because I see the no winter maintenance signs all over this town, and I will not shovel a bike path.
That's an issue that, uh, that's been raised. I agree with you. Ma'am, there was another lady, ma'am?
Sorry, mayor, I apologize. Can I just make one comment about the road grades? I don't, she brought up a new point there. Um, we are well aware of the water elevation. We've looked at the one-hundred-year water surface elevation in that area, and we will incorporate that into the design to verify that we do not roar, lower the roadway such that, um, if water comes up, up to that one-hundred-year elevation, it will, we'll design it such that the roadway, uh, is not lowered below that elevation. Um, that's not to say that we may not get something larger, a larger event like, like she talked about, hundred-year, multiple years in a row. Well, we might get something that's greater than a hundred-year, heaven forbid, sometime in the future, um, water may go over the roadway. But we're going to design it based on the information we know, and we won't lower it lower than that current hundred-year elevation.
And I've been through about ten hundred-year floods. We don't call them hundred-year floods anymore. We call them four-year floods because that's what they've been basically doing. Okay, ma'am, I'm sorry.
Okay. Mr. Mayor and City Council, I'm Donna De Four, and I live at twenty-seven oh six Fourth Drive Southwest. To me, this is rural and we don't need curbs and gutters. We all have huge driveways. Nobody parks along that street. I, I don't see a reason for that. I don't mind the road being widened and fixed, but a bike path, you know, if it's widened, there's plenty for them to ride. I ride my bike all the time down that road, and it's plenty wide for me. But like he's, like the other lady mentioned, you get to Twenty-Eight, there is no place safe to drive down that road. And when, when our road was being worked on before and I rode my bike to work every day, I went from my house down Twenty-Eight, down past the Sheriff's Juice Ranch, and that Twenty-Eight was the most perilous part of my ride, but I had no choice. And I wouldn't want anyone to ride out there and be stuck with, "Where am I going now?" because that is not a safe road.
But people do ride that road on their bike.
They do ride it.
They ride Twenty-Eighth and they ride Fourth.
They do ride it. I've ridden it.
Okay.
But I don't want all my big trees gone. Uh, we didn't buy that land to have no front yard and beautiful trees. And, and he mentioned earlier, saving the trees. Well, this would, it'll destroy a lot of trees out in that land. So-
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
There was somebody over here?
Hi, everyone. I'm Carissa Studier, and I coordinate the statewide health improvement program for Mauer County. Um, just wanted to state that Ship Mauer County, uh, is supportive of the implementation of sidewalks and trails as it supports walking, biking, uh, rollerblading, skateboarding, and many other types of physical activity. Uh, as you probably know, consistently, Americans don't get the recommended amount of physical activity, which contributes to obesity, chronic diseases such as diabetes, heart disease, et cetera, et cetera. Um, establishing sidewalks and trails improves opportunities for individuals and families to be physically active. Um, to support this point, the Minnesota Statewide Pedestrian System Plan, uh, conducted community engagement efforts in 2015, um, through MINDOT and the Department of Health. Uh, people of Minnesota felt that the greatest barrier to not walking was poor sidewalks, poor trails, or none at all. Um, I did bring a graphic to show that, but I don't think this is working. So, I just wanted to point that out. Thank you.
Okay. Well, the only thing I'm going to add is, is, you know, I, I live close to this road, and there's bike traffic on this road. I mean, if somebody says that bikes aren't going down this road, I mean, the people know there's bike traffic on this road, and the road is not safe right now the way it is. It's just like County Twenty-Eight. There's bike traffic on Twenty-Eight quite a bit. I mean, it's not like in town, but there's, there's bike club in town, and they ride that road. And, uh, you know, it's, you know, we need to do something down there. Is there anybody, anybody else that wishes, uh, Jerry, Sue, Sue?
I'm Suzanne McCarthy. Live at three oh six Thirteenth Street Northeast, over by East Side Lake, and there's a bike path over there. People use it all the time. Um, probably started riding seven, eight years ago. The health benefits have been amazing. Weight loss, feel better. Um, we do ride on Twenty-Eighth Street. We go down, and it's dangerous. We go to Twenty-Eighth Street, but we try to get our twenty miles in a day, and we bike over to Freeborn County. Um, we've got a ten-mile out, ten-mile back route that we take. I think anything to encourage physical health for everybody should be so encouraged. I would look at this as an opportunity rather than a detriment. And I understand that you're going to be looking like you're losing some land, but if it is right-of-way, it's the same thing they're doing on the Shooting Star Trail that everybody enjoys, and they have made that trail through people's right-of-ways, or they're going to be expanding it through right-of-ways of people's yards. And nobody has argued about that. They know it's a good thing. Um, as far as what Scott said, where's the trail going to go once it goes over the bridge? Steve could tell you about the plans for the trail coming up by the waste treatment plant, and then I think that's being worked on right now, right back there.
Yeah, it's, it's in there now.
I don't know what that road's called, South Main or something like that. And it is going to cut back through there and then come along on that road next to the Rosenthal addition. So there will be trail back in there or a way to get across.
There is a trail on the, on the south side of the bridge. There's a trail. They can walk from that trail, go on that trail, right over the top.
Right. But what it's going to do now is cross Fourth Street and then take you back along that road that's like a dead end, um, down to the treatment plant, and then you'll ride next to that on the trail, go down the hill, and ride over to the band shell. So it is going to connect the city. It's just unless you see the long-range plan, it's hard to picture. So, I think it's a great opportunity. I can kind of see where the homeowners are coming from, but I'd say be happy. Man, you're lucky to have it.
Thank you.
So.
I'd just like to say too, every, anytime we put, you know, a sidewalk in, I mean, right now, we're talking about another section of town, whether the state grant and putting a sidewalk in, and it seems like no matter where you put sidewalks and widen roads, people are initially against it. It's just, it's, it's, you can predict, I mean, it's, you, you, you just know people are going to be against it. And then years later, sometimes they, you know, sometimes they like it, sometimes they don't, but it's, it's common. And I, I hear a lot of people talking about taking their land, but we're not, Steven, we're not taking anybody's land. Is that, I mean, this is all right-of-way, and part of that right-of-way might be part of your, in your, you know, areas you're mowing and stuff now, but that's still part of, it's, you know, we're not taking anybody's land, or we wouldn't be taking anybody's land for this.
Can I just ask one question?
Sure.
If the, okay, if the road does get moved, the twenty-four feet further into our yard, which is right-of-way if it is, will there be another right-of-way then? Will, then will there be further into our land that's then right-of-way that can be taken later?
No, I don't, Steven?
Um, you know, right-of-way varies throughout town, but just generally speaking, um, like I said, the right-of-way line is about thirty-three feet from the center line on each side, uh, except for areas where I mentioned, there is a service drive, so there, there's room for a service drive, so there's a little extra right-of-way. So, if we, if we look at thirty-three feet from the center line, um, the roadway I said was thirty-eight feet in width. That is, uh, seventeen feet, no, nineteen feet on each side of center line. So if they have thirty-three feet from the center line to the right-of-way, the curb will be nineteen feet from the center line. That will leave thirty-three minus nineteen is fourteen feet of grass area between the back of curb and the right-of-way line. Just talking generally. So I know there's been lots of different numbers thrown out, twenty-four feet, thirty-three feet, whatever it might be. In most areas, the right-of-way line is thirty-three feet over from center line, and the new back of curb is going to be nineteen feet from center line.
So how much property are we going to be taking? I mean, I, I realize it's right-of-way, but it's still, if it's, if it's, if it's in their yard, I can see why they consider it their property, if they use it for-
Maintain it, mow it. Yep, yep. Um, in a lot of areas, we're going to take up the ditch.
Mm-hmm.
You know, that ditch is going to be filled in. That's what we're going to take up with the new road.
Right.
And then there will be some grading behind that to make slopes match in and those sorts of things. Um, if, you know, the goal would be to lower the road, um, but in some areas, we're not going to be able to lower the road because there are driveways adjacent to it that are already very steep.
Mm-hmm.
In those areas, we'll put in storm sewer behind the curb to pick up that water that's draining off the yard. It'll be picked up by storm sewer inlets and taken into the, the storm sewer mains and discharged into the Cedar River.
Okay, so how, how far are we gonna be going basically into the yards, you know, past where we're at right now?
The roadway is 24 feet wide now.
Right, and it's gonna be 33.
Yeah, and it's, so we'll, 24 feet wide now, it's gonna be 38 feet when we're done, so that's about seven more feet on each side.
So, we'll be going seven feet farther than we are right now?
Than it currently, than that asphalt currently is, yes.
Does anybody, has everybody got that?
My easement shows 30 feet on my abstract, and it's over 30 feet every time you do the math.
That we'd be going 30 feet into your yard?
Over 30 feet.
Is that possible, Stephen?
Not to my knowledge. I can, I can send some exact, some drawings that we have on our base map showing property lines, roadway alignment with aerial photo behind it. I can send that to the Weaver, so they are aware of what we show as their property line.
I think all of us would like to see a visual. Where is the road going? What is going on? We don't see it. What we have now is a little map with, sometimes the bike path is up next to the road, sometimes the bike path has got a 10-foot boulevard and then 10-foot path, which is another 20 feet in. If you wanna put a bike path in, keep it next to the road, or don't put it in at all?
The, the only spot where there's a 10-foot boulevard is where the church is located, where there is the wider, extra property for the, for the unbuilt service drive. In other areas, it is five feet, for the most part, where we're adjacent to residential properties, it is a five-foot boulevard at the most. Some areas, we don't even have room for the five-foot boulevard, so the trail is right behind the curb.
Do you, I need to, excuse me?
I'd just like to say, you know, I, I live on 15th Avenue, just north of Cedar, of Turtle Creek. And I walk, you know, I have dogs, I walk my dogs, and I avoid that area. I mean, I've, I've gone down there before, and the, the traffic is just too heavy. I don't like walking my dogs down there. After this project, I, you know, I'd love to walk down there, but I, I just avoid that area right now. So, you know, it, it's an, pardon?
That's why I'm out there.
I know. But, you know, on my property, I have a sidewalk and a, and a boulevard, you know, and at some point, they went in, you know, before I moved there, but they went in and took, you know, took that area up and made a sidewalk and boulevard. It wasn't there, you know, always. So, I mean, it's just normal progress. It happens to most of the streets in town, you know, unless, unless they did it, you know, you've had it a long time ago. So, you know, it's, it's stuff that, and if, and probably, if I was living on that street, and I didn't have a sidewalk and a boulevard, and they wanted to put one in, I'd probably be sitting right here too, saying, you know, I don't want this stuff. But after, you know, I'm glad it's there now. So, you know, I just ask you to, to look at that too. I mean, one of the thing, one of our big projects is we're trying to be a bike-friendly community. Mr. Keim here is, is ahead of our bike-friendly community committee, and they've done just some wonderful things with, with the bike trails and stuff in town. And I think, you know, you talk about it going down to 28th and ending there. That's not the plan. I think at some point, it's gonna hook up, you know, with another trail down there, and this is just a piece, and this whole thing is piecemeal, and they do it, you know, one section now, another section now. And I wish we could say, yes, in two or three years, there's gonna be another section taking it from here to the railroad bed and it heading south. And, you know, I can't say that, but I can say it's gonna happen eventually in, in that area. And lacking this, it'd be that much harder for us to do. You talk about going out to 12th Street. Well, 12th Street's a relatively new road, you know, so you'd have a hard time putting this in out there now because that's just been rebuilt not that long ago.
Sidewalks there? All you gotta do is widen it a couple feet for bikes, and it's already there.
Your Honor, if I, if I could, there's, there's, to me, there's two issues here that the neighbors are expressing, actually the property, the property owners are expressing. And that's who I give a lot of credence to, is those where the property is actually gonna affect. But there's two issues. There's not enough clarity in the design, at least portrayed to the residents, and there's also two very important members of our council that are missing. So, I would hate to go forward with this with a, with a vote. Dave Hagan is our second ward, council member, who certainly has constituents here talking tonight, isn't here. I would recommend that we table this till the next council meeting on the 16th of March, to provide Mr. Lang some time to get some more drawings and schematics, and meet with the neighbors, and also provide two other council members here for this vote.
I think I would agree with that. Should we set up another meeting for the informational meeting before the council meeting?
Yeah, what's the procedure of this public hearing?
Continue it.
Continue it.
Continue it to March, our next council meeting, March 16th, I believe.
Okay. Is that a motion?
March 7th.
March what?
March 7th.
The next one.
Yeah, is Mr. Hagan gonna be here on March 7th?
I don't believe so.
So, why don't we put it off till Mr. Hagan is back, and when is that gonna be, Frank?
We can't, we can't do that, can we?
We can't do that?
No. We can continue it, we can continue it to a date desired. We've gotta have, if we continue it tonight, we have to have a date and time certain.
We're working on that. We're working on that. All right.
So, when will he?
Okay, the 20-second is the date we can set it for. So, Stephen, it's.
So, my motion is to continue it to March 22nd, council meeting.
Mr. Lang, does that provide, does that result in any problems with this project by delaying the public hearing till that point? Time, timelines, timeframes?
March 20 what?
21st.
He said 22nd.
Oh, it's 21st.
It's gonna be the 21st.
Mr. Lang?
The plans and specifications need to be submitted, the plans need to be submitted to the state by April 1st. So, so that will make it tight. We can talk to the state since we know ahead of time that this is coming. We can talk to them about possibly delaying the plan submittal. I'm not saying it won't create any problems. It'll, it will, there, there could be, but I don't have a definite answer for you. There's, there's some time there.
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay, well, we have a motion to put it off to the 21st. Was there a second?
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. I mean, I, I'm in favor of this, but obviously, there's not the clarity that people would need, so hopefully, we can get that at the next meeting and put some of your concerns to the rest. Okay?
You know, I just wanna encourage, as I think the mayor just did, moving, you know, thinking longer term, and what we want, where the city is, the city is growing. You know, we're, we're trying to develop and, and work on the bike paths, and also just making the, you know, making growth and, and use of the land that we have the best we can do it. So, we'll, we'll really work hard on making that a consensus-building issue, but, but sometimes, it's, it's tough to see.
And it really is a major throughway. I mean, that's a major road in town, and it's not built as one. It's built as a little tiny road, and, I mean, it's, it's, you know, you don't want more people on there because you wanna live in the country, but, you know, like I say, there's people like myself, I live two or three blocks away from there. I don't go that way because it's just not, it's not built the way it should be. It's dangerous, and I see people walking down that road every single day with dogs and biking and, and kids going to school, and it's just something needs, no, I'm not saying, you know, we need to do the whole ball of whack. I would like to see it, but something needs to be done. It's just, it's just a, it's, it's not the way it should be right now. But anyway, we'll, we'll bring this up again on the 21st. Mr. Hagan will be here. Hopefully, we can have the information. I think we have a pretty good idea what everybody is looking for. Hopefully, we can put some of your concerns to rest at that time. Thanks, everybody for coming.
Did you say 21st or 22nd?
21st.
21st.
21st, it's a Monday.
Nothing's been built in 30 years around something. Is there a plan to develop something?
I don't, we can, you know, maybe we can address that at the next meeting. I don't know. Okay, thank everybody for, I wanna thank everybody for coming. And now we are, we'll give one second to clear out here.
Don't you think it's good to delay? It seems like it's pretty hard to keep people waiting.
Should we take a couple-minute recess?
No, let's just keep going.
All right, let's keep going then. Number 10, under petitions and requests, is a resolution setting a public hearing for March 21st, 2016, for street improvement assessments. We need a resolution.
So move the resolution.
Can, Ms. Mayor?
Steve, you might wanna stay in here to vote on this. Do we need him?
We need to remove item number five on that resolution because we're not setting the public hearing for the assessments for this project. So, if you could amend your resolution.
amend the resolution to show that, please.
Okay, that, this resolution was the last one we voted on?
This one, number 10.
Okay. So, with that, we have a resolution. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Dankert?
Councilmember King. Austin.
Aye.
Jordal.
Aye.
Carolyn. Councilmember Largie Anderson.
Aye.
Uh, resolution's approved 4-0, Your Honor.
Approving the, 11 is a resolution approving the modification of the current detective area with funding coming in from police PRA funds, budget adjustment number one. Ryan?
This is what we discussed at the last work session. We currently have $54,390 in our PRA balance. I'm requesting to use up to $5,250 to make the necessary improvements for a new detective's office in our facilities.
Questions, comments? If not, we need a resolution.
So move the resolution.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Dankert?
Councilmember King. Austin.
Aye.
Jordal.
Aye.
Carolyn.
Aye.
Councilmember Largie Anderson.
Aye.
Resolution passes 4-0, Your Honor.
Approving sanitary sewer user fees and sanitary sewer access charges. Stephen?
Yes, as we discussed at the last work session, we're recommending some changes to those rates. Currently, on your utility bill, you are charged a connection fee and a usage fee for the water that you use that goes down the drain and is treated through the sanitary sewer system. The funds that we collect are used for domestic wastewater plant improvements, operation and maintenance of our sanitary sewer collection system, capital improvement projects at the wastewater treatment plant, and also sanitary sewer lift stations as well. We review our rates every, every couple of years. We have a flow chart there of what our rates have been over the last 15, 16 years, and we are recommending, proposing, recommending an increase to the connection fee that would be, go into effect on April 1st, 2016, increasing it from $7.98 to $8.78 per hookup throughout the community. Also including, also recommending the flow charge be increased 20 cents from $2.04 to $2.24. Again, that would, recommending that would occur on April 1st of 2016. There would then be a second increase that would occur on January 1st of 2017 for both those connection and flow charges. Again, this funding is utilized for improvements at the wastewater treatment plant. In our CIP, we have large infrastructure projects planned at the wastewater treatment plant, and that's why we are planning ahead with these rate increases for those future projects. As you also mentioned, we have a sewer connection fee, a sanitary sewer access charge. We have different rates for that, and we are recommending increases, as shown in your handout, for those proposed rates. If you, and that is all I have, if you have any questions.
Also, got anything? If not, we need a resolution for approving sanitary sewer user fees.
So move the resolution.
Is there a second?
Second.
Councilmember King. Austin.
Aye.
Jordal.
Aye.
Carolyn.
Aye.
Councilmember Largie Anderson.
Aye.
Resolution passes 4-0, Your Honor.
B, approving sanitary sewer user fee for Mapleview. Need a resolution.
So move the resolution.
Is there a second?
Second.
Tom?
Councilmember King. Austin.
Aye.
Jordal.
Aye.
Carolyn.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Resolution passes 4-0, Your Honor.
Approving sanitary sewer user fees for Bellman's Edition. Need a resolution.
So move the resolution.
Is there a second? Mr. Dankert?
Councilmember King. Austin.
Aye.
Jordal.
Aye.
Carolyn.
Aye.
Councilmember Largie Anderson.
Aye.
Resolution passes 4-0, Your Honor.
Thank you. D is sanitary sewer access charge. Resolution?
So move the resolution.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Dankert?
Councilmember King. Austin.
Aye.
Jordal.
Aye.
Carolyn. Councilmember Largie Anderson. Resolution passes 4-0, Your Honor.
13 is a resolution approving an agreement with MINDOT for aeronautics for airport maintenance and operations. We did this at the work session. Anybody have any questions on it? If not, we need a resolution.
So move the resolution.
Is there a second?
Second.
Tom?
Councilmember King. Austin.
Aye.
Jordal.
Aye.
Carolyn. Councilmember Largie Anderson. Resolution passes 4-0, Your Honor.
14 is a resolution approving a farm lease with VS Farms LLC. Stephen, I think we do this, you go ahead and.
Yeah, this one's very straightforward. We have a, we have a farm lease with, currently with Scott Family Farms. They have merged and changed their name to VS Farms, so we're just requesting that be changed on the lease agreement that we have with them.
Any questions, comments? If not, we need a resolution.
So move.
Is there a second? Mr. Dankert?
Councilmember Austin.
Aye.
Jordal.
Aye.
Carolyn.
Aye.
Councilmember Largie Anderson.
Aye.
Resolution passes 4-0, Your Honor.
15 is a motion approving a voluntary assessment in an amount of $9,057 to the Coalition of Greater Minnesota Cities. Great.
Mayor members, this is a next step kind of in our continuing efforts to address the wastewater concerns that we had with MPCA regulations that have been recently adopted. Austin is currently operating on an expired permit, and we're one of the first communities to be squared against the new regulations. As you may recall, during the legislative, past legislative process, we asked for the rules to be approved by the legislature and concerns with cost and the science used for the new regulations. We did not prevail in that effort, but the significant cost that we could be looking at for as high as $20 million, we don't know the specifics, but obviously, very costly to, potentially costly to our rate payers. This voluntary assessment will allow Coalition of Greater Minnesota Cities to exhaust our legal options against the state rulemaking petition and amend those water quality rules, as well as the federal lawsuit against the EPA for approving the MPC's marine standards. Council action is requested to approve the voluntary assessment and participating in the suit. I would say for the record, the city has worked directly with the Minnesota Pollution Control Agency on this issue, and they have been very accommodating, at least rhetorically, to us, but we need to still protect our legal options in this result and would suggest approval.
Questions, comments? If not, we need a motion.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Opposed? 16 is a series of resolutions approving 2016 election reso, resolutions add.
We annexed this area that showed on your screen, Turtle Creek 2, last year, and we, it was effective as of January 1st, and we were informed by the Secretary of State that we need to have a separate precinct for them since they are over 61 voters. They can automatically fall within the city county commissioner. So I have a series of resolutions. The first would be creating that precinct. The second, and actually, here's the legal description for that. And then the second, you can see the precinct, it's to the far left of your screen, it's that little pinkish area, and then the second resolution would be combining a polling place for all of the first ward, second precinct, which is the orange, and for the pink, so we don't have to set up a separate polling place out there in the pink. So the first resolution would be creating the polling place. The second resolution would be combining the polling place at the high school, which has adequate space. And then the third resolution is, we talked about Ward 1 Precinct 1, they voted at Riverland last year, and we just felt that that was too large of a campus for our voters to come there, so we were going to have them come here to City Hall. So we've discussed that with the state and with the county, and they're supportive of these changes, so we would request that you pass these three resolutions.
Okay, any comments or question on these?
Where in City Hall? Would it be in the council chambers?
Right here, yes. So we would have ample space here, including our lobby area, to get people registered and voted and all of that, and it's handicap accessible. We're, you know, ADA compliant with all of that, so it would be a great place.
Anything else? All right, we need a resolution establishing a new precinct for newly annexed areas of the city.
So move the resolution.
Is there a second?
Second.
Tom?
Councilmember Austin.
Aye.
Jordal.
Aye.
Carolyn.
Aye.
Councilmember Larg Anderson.
Aye.
Resolution passes 4-0, Your Honor.
Need a resolution combining polling locations for Ward 1, Precinct 2, and Ward 1 Precinct 3. Need a resolution.
So move the resolution.
Is there a second?
Second.
Tom?
Councilmember Austin.
Aye.
Jordal.
Aye.
Carolyn.
Aye.
Councilmember Larg Anderson.
Aye.
Resolution passes 4-0, Your Honor.
And least, or C is designating all polling locations for all future city utility, school district, county, and state elections. We need a resolution.
So move the resolution.
Is there a second?
Second.
Tom?
Councilmember Austin.
Aye.
Jordal.
Aye.
Carolyn.
Aye.
Councilmember Larg Anderson.
Aye.
Resolution passes 4-0, Your Honor.
17 is a motion authorizing summer ice at Riverside Arena. Kim?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. The information in your packet was taken to our park board at their February meeting, and we would like to request to have summer ice through July 11th, using some funding that was granted through us for the Bruins, so that they can also have a camp here as well for tryouts. So it's a kind of a great opportunity for us to try out our new system as well as offering ice into some warmer months.
Be a good thing for Austin.
Yes, I think so.
Definitely sounds like it.
Any comments, questions?
It was endorsed by the park board at their meeting that we do this, and I think it's a great opportunity to try it out and see what happens.
Great. Need a motion?
So moved.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right.
Thank you.
18 is a motion authorizing the mayor to sign a letter in support of tax exempt municipal bonds. Craig?
Mayor members, essentially, this letter brought forward by Mark Nibauer from Austin Utilities would allow the mayor to sign the letter. I've talked with Attorney Hoverson, and he suggested we need the council approval to do so. This essentially would just endorse tax-exempt status for municipal bonds, which is used for infrastructure, as members, I think, widely know, cost of infrastructure is very high and deterioration, and I think the letter pointed out 3.6 trillion by 2020 nationwide. This adds about 20, 25 to 30 percent interest cost if this tax-exempt status wasn't at play. Sort of a no-brainer, I suppose, for most part, but we needed authorization to sign the letter in support of maintaining the tax-exempt status.
Comments, questions? If not, we need a motion.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And finally, 19 is a resolution authorizing the pledge of general obligation credit for the refinance of HRA bonds. Tom?
Austin HRA is in the process of refinancing some bonds for courtyard apartments that are at some higher rates. What they're looking at doing is doing a private placement, which is, in essence, negotiate a sale with a local regional bank, but with that, they've asked us to pledge our GEO pledge again, which exists on the current bond issue, which means if they don't have sufficient revenues to pay the bonds off, that we, the city, will pledge a tax levy or other financing sources to help pay that bond issue. So it's on, exists again on the existing that is being refinanced, so all they're doing is asking us to pledge that on this new refinance debt.
Council, you got any questions, comments? If not, we need a resolution.
So move the resolution.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Dankert?
Councilmember Austin.
Aye.
Jordal.
Aye.
Carolyn.
Aye.
Councilmember Larg Anderson.
Aye.
Resolution passes 4-0, Your Honor.
All right, are there any citizens present tonight that wish to address the council on anything?
Hi there, my name is Quinn Brunner. I'm aware that members of the Austin City Council are reviewing a proposal regarding the sale of the Austin Municipal Power Plant building. While a vote on this proposal is not yet on the agenda, I would like to formally request that the purchase agreement under consideration be released to the public, so the citizens of this community have ample time to develop a firsthand understanding of the proposal and have the opportunity to provide feedback on this issue.
I think we have plans for, Craig, do we have plans to have a public meeting? I think they have plans to have a public meeting in this, pardon?
Yeah, Vision 2020 intends to have, they're trying to get a final date set for a public presentation, and we'd also coordinate, I think, in advance of that to talk with the public and explain exactly what the proposal would be coming forward, so.
So I understand about the community forum, the actual purchase agreement, will that be released publicly at some point in this process?
Absolutely.
Is there any kind of timeline on when that will happen?
The mayor members, the draft agreement is still being worked out between the parties, and at that point, we would release the agreement.
Okay.
When we have an agreement? We don't have an agreement yet.
Right, correct.
Okay, yeah, thank you. I'd just like to add that in the past month, I've collected nearly 200 signatures among, from community members who are concerned about the demolition of this building. I've sat down with a number of these Austin residents to talk about this issue, and I've heard time and time again that members of this community are concerned about the lack of transparency surrounding the whole ordeal here. Residents recognize the significance of the decision the city is going to be making and they do want more information, so as soon as information is available, I would appreciate that being, you know, made readily available to the citizens of Austin. So thank you for your time and consideration of my proposal.
Anybody else? Okay, we, two reports. Let's start with Jeff.
Yes, we did have a park and rec board meeting on February 3rd. We discussed several items, a couple highlights. We're looking at forwarding a resolution, bringing a resolution to council to designate Austin as a pollinator-friendly, best practices city. We're also looking at some monarch butterfly habitat sites, and approval was given for electrical and plumbing, for remodeling work being done at the Isaac Walton Cabin, and we also forwarded the item that we, number 17, the ice in Riverside Arena for the summer. That's all I have, Your Honor.
Thank you.
I just want to kind of piggyback on what Councilmember Austin just said about a pollinator-friendly city and how important it is to recognize how we're proceeding with that, and this is, you know, certainly a statewide issue, so the Sustainability Task Force is also working on this and is a recommending body, so we'll be recommending to the city council to pass this resolution, be alluded to. As Paint the Town Pink is kind of starting to wrap up, but there are still events coming up this week. I know there's something tomorrow, the 18th, so please check the website and see what's going on. I believe there's a lunch at St. Mark's, and there's a few other things going on, and also, perhaps Kim will help me out here, the, is it Brownsdale having events coming up?
Adams is coming up.
Adams, on the 27th, I think. So anyways, please check your Paint the Town Pink schedule, which you can access through the city website for other events that are going on, and it's really growing beyond the city and several of our, the city of Austin, and several other cities in the county are working on it as well.
Mike?
Nothing, Your Honor.
Henry?
Nothing, Your Honor.
Eric?
Yes, I think maybe I've mentioned it prior, but just to remind folks, Congressman Walz has chosen to do a housing summit here in Austin, I think 10 to 3 on March 10th, for those interested in housing, and participating in that event, please look forward to that. It's at the Holiday Inn Event Center here in Austin, so.
Okay. Any other report?
Then Stephen.
I have two things. First, might have to bring Mr. King back in here for this, but item number nine, I would...
He's actually gone, he had another thing he had to run.
Okay. Item, item number nine, there are, if there are changes to the proposed layout, there are approvals that are needed by the state, and delaying that hearing until March 21st may not allow, those approvals by the state are out of my control. I can't force them to do them in a speedy timeframe. What I would ask is to revisit item number nine, delaying, not delaying, but extending the hearing to March 7th. I understand that Mr. Hagan is still going to be out on March 7th. It would allow me to talk with the state and see what sort of timeframe they need. If they can complete their work between March 21st and the April 1st deadline, we can, we can then, at the March 7th meeting, delay it until March 21st, but I would, I would hate to, right now, set the March 21st date and have the state tell me that they cannot get the project approvals turned around in that short of time, and we would be putting in jeopardy our million-dollar grant that we have.
David, what's the procedure on that? We already continued it to March 21st, and that was Mr. King that made the motion, he's no longer here.
Someone else could motion to rescind that and make a new motion?
Well, if it's the same meeting, you'd have to, someone make a motion reconsider. It would have to be one of the parties that voted for the original motion to continue. So that was going to handle, so.
Yes. Yeah.
We're going to have to make some effort to contact these people because they're going to, it's going to look bad.
I, I kind of anticipate that, that once they have something more concrete they can see, that that will maybe, hopefully, resolve some of the problems or issues, because I think some of them really felt like it was their property as opposed to the right-of-way discussions we were having.
The issue is resetting the meeting.
Right, I know it is, but I'm just saying that once they get that information, it might, what?
Well, I'm sorry, there we go, I'm telling them.
Yeah, we can if we can get this wrapped up.
So we need a motion to reconsider?
Yeah.
I would...
Made by anybody. Anybody made, made by, it could be made by anyone because they all voted for it.
Right.
I would make a motion to reconsider the hearing date, continuation on the hearing for item number nine.
To March 7?
To March 7.
Second?
On favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Stephen, maybe you should run out there and tell the ones that are still here, because there's still a bunch of them out there. Okay, with...
He does, he doesn't have something else.
Sounds like a mission.
All right, with that, then we need a motion.
Now we also need to reset it for March 7th, right? You rescinded that one.
Yes. Okay.
Jeff?
Make a motion to continue the hearing till, to March 7th.
Is there a second?
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, anything else?
Yeah, I do have one more thing. I would like to, from a city staff, I'd like to send our condolences out to the family of Jerry Wilkinson, who passed away suddenly over the weekend. Jerry worked in the Public Works Department for over 30 years. He was a team member of the Sewer Department, I believe, originally, worked for the Street Department as well, and most recently, for the last 10 years, worked very close with him in the Engineering Department. So Jerry was loved by many people, had an impact on many people that worked for the city, also city residents, that he may have impacted them through his work at the city, whether it be in the Street Department or here at the Engineering Department overseeing street reconstruction. So just like to express our condolences to his family and have him be in everyone's thoughts and prayers. Thank you.
Thanks, Stephen.
I think you speak for all of us on that. With that, we need a motion to adjourn till Monday, March 7th.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Any questions? Holy...